Good evening and hello everyone and welcome to Reading's Recap, Reading Recap's very first candidate forum. Being held for the candidates running for election and reelection in the town of Reading. We are pleased to be joined in their order appearing on the ballot for the following members of the school for candidates for school committee. Thomas Wise incumbent for reelection, Lara Dergovich candidate for election and Dana Guarino candidate for reelection. To begin, we would like to each of the candidates in the order they're appearing on the ballot to start by offering their opening statements. And then when we do closing arguments, those will be done in the opposite order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, and thank you to Reading Recap and my fellow candidates for joining us this evening. Thank you to Nancy for being ready to ask us questions as well. I'm sure some of them will be challenging. For those of you that don't know, I'm Tom Wise. I am the member for reelection as it stands right now. I have thankfully served two terms on the school committee. During those two terms, I've been fortunate enough to be chair for three years and vice chair for two years. I'm very proud of the work we've done as a school committee collective, not just me, as an entire collective over the last six years. The work we've done to really kind of transform our schools. That starts with some of the hiring we did, inclusive of our superintendent of schools, Dr. Milicewski, and the support staff he's brought in along with him, but doesn't stop there. We on the school committee have made great strides together. We've worked and I particularly built the model to enable full day kindergarten as tuition free for our town. And we in the school committee voted to move that forward. We've put in place many, many policies over the last few years where prior to that, there were years without policy changes. So we've been doing that as a team as well. In addition to my time on the school committee, I've also been able to serve on other boards as part of it. Ex officio from a school committee member. And while on the Reading ARPA advisory committee, I was part of that team and built the model that's necessary to distribute about nine hundred thousand dollars to our frontline workers as well. Long story short, I've been there, I've done that, and I've been in the weeds. In addition to that, I'm very proud of some of the work we've done from a curriculum perspective and the goals we've put in place to drive the district forward. We've made some big strides with regards to our reading curriculum, with regards to our math curriculum. We just recently talked about our English language learners curriculum as well. And we've made huge strides at the high school with our innovation pathways. So, long story short, we've made big strides and I'm looking forward to the next three years.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Ms. Dergovich?
Sure. Hi, and thank you to both the Reading Recap and Chuck and Nancy and my fellow candidates for inviting me to participate tonight. My name is Laura Dergovich and I am a first time candidate for one of the three year school committee seats. I have been a Reading resident for about 10 years. And my husband and I currently have two kids in the Reading Public School Systems, a daughter at Parker and a son at Joshua Eaton. I also have a PhD in anthropology and I have spent my entire professional career working in higher education as an instructor and fellow at Harvard as well as Tufts and Boston University. And supplementing that by engaging in a lot of science communication and educational outreach initiatives. So I come into this arena with a fair amount of experience in the world of education. And I think that as a passionate and experienced advocate for educational excellence, I can bring a really valuable perspective to the school committee. Teaching has given me a lot of insight into the kinds of variables that affect student motivation and student performance. And as a school committee member, my primary goal will be to work to make sure that the learning environments of our schools as well as the district policies of Reading Public Schools enable and encourage our students to build intellectual bridges across subjects and to develop the different practical skills that they need to succeed. Basically, I want students to want to learn. And the school committee is crucial to supporting investment and diversity in our schools. So I hope that you will give me the opportunity to serve students, teachers, and the Reading community by helping our schools produce well-rounded, independent thinkers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dergovich. Mr. Guarino?
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Chris, Reading Recap, Chuck, Nancy. Appreciate you having us here and the other candidates. So my name is Danny Guarino. Some of you know me from last year running. This is my second time running for school committee. I'm running for one of two seats. I grew up in this town. I've been a resident now for the last 10 years with my daughter, who's going to be going to Parker next year, and my twins, who are in third grade now. Growing up in this town, it helped foster a lot of the education that I needed to proceed and go on to higher learning, both in Springfield College and then going to Mass College of Pharmacy to get my masters in medicine to becoming an orthopedic physician assistant. Now, over the last 16 years, working in medicine, we work with everyone from different races to different sexes, from all socioeconomic statuses. We take care of patients that don't have homes and we take care of patients that live in fifteen million dollar homes. Having that ability to be able to build common ground with everybody across the board is something that I think would be necessary and to bring to the school committee. Over the last five years, just having my kids in the program, I've seen great strides and changes. From having a son that has gone through testing and have talked to teachers and principals, I think it's been amazing. I think we're still on this upward trajectory. My goals as someone on the school committee would be to meet a child where they are and maximize their potential. I think as a school committee member, we should teach these kids to give them the tools to overcome obstacles, not remove them. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm also pleased to welcome Nancy Twardrowski, who will be answering or who will be asking the questions to the candidates tonight. So let's get started. Candidates will each answer a series of up to 10 questions if time allows. Turns will be rotating for who responds, rotating from who responds first to ensure we cover all the questions within the allotted time. We ask that responses be kept at to a maximum of two minutes per question. A yellow card will be raised when 30 seconds remain and a red card will be sent when the time is up. Each candidate has the opportunity for to rebuttal with one minute each. And without further ado, I'll pass it off to Nancy.
Well, thank you so much Chuck and thank you to all of the participants that are here today. We're so grateful that you're here. I just wanted to share that none of the candidates have any prior knowledge of any of the questions that are going to be asked today. And we're really looking forward to an incredible discussion. And on that note, I will ask the first question with Chuck then announcing who will be first to respond.
So Dana, this goes to you.
We are incredibly grateful for the volunteers that helped to shape our community. Volunteering to run for school committee is a tremendous undertaking and a huge commitment to our town if elected. What motivated you to choose to run for election or reelection?
Okay, so what motivated me to run was to give back to the community. So having grown up in this town, have gone through the school systems. Having come here as a child and gone through the high school and middle school, I was able to foster a great education. And growing up with friends of mine, no one even talked about going to private school. It was like, oh, we went to Reading. Reading has the best school systems. That's why my parents moved here because they couldn't afford private school. When I came back subsequently 10 years ago, we were, there was a little bit of a struggle going on. There was a little bit of an issue with scores and the academics. I would tell you that over the last five years, things have continued to improve. I'd like to see them continue to improve. And the transparency between school systems and the teachers and parents is something that I really think is important. And to have that is something that I really want to see. I actually think that moving forward, challenging these kids, like let's teach them how to succeed. In a culture where we've decided to help them and we don't want to see them struggle, allowing them to fail is some of the best benefits in life. And so if we're pushing these young students to be able to succeed, overcome their obstacles, then they're going to be successful in life. And so as my kids grow up through this school system, I have the most invested interest to see them succeed along with their peers as they move forward into every season of their life. Thank you.
Thank you Dana. Tom?
So my why, that's a great question. Actually noted it down to make sure I include it in the closing. My why actually started back in 2015. My why started when Joshua Eaton first went level three as a school. And we had a lot of challenges around that time. My why started with how the administration responded to the Joshua Eaton challenge. And frankly, I didn't feel like it was sufficient, so I wanted to get involved and help move that forward. On top of that, around that time, as many know, one of my, one of my children was going through the IEP process and so I got really close to or really in connection with a lot of the parents that were going through that as well. And they struggled, they were struggling with the process. And the district wasn't doing the right thing at the point in time, in my opinion. So part of the, part of my why was helping to make and repair those bridges, right? Build the bridges and repair them as necessary. You can send, continue down that path and you look at, as Dana referred to, some of the test scores at the time, which is why Joshua Eaton went level three, that wasn't the only school, were on the downward trend. And all I heard was excuses as opposed to solutions or focus on solutions. So I really wanted to get, dive into that and drive for improvement. For me, it starts at the beginning, you know, teaching them to read and making sure they can read. Because if you can't read, you can't access the curriculum at all. I would hear things like, oh, we're going to improve our access in the high school to different classes, but the students that you're trying to give those classes to can't read. So it starts at the beginning. And we've done a lot of work over the last few years to improve that beginning. And I'm very proud of it. You know, even last year, we ranked in the 95th percentile, I think, for our third grade across the district in our test scores, which was unheard of, unheard of a few years ago. So my why continues to be that and it's monitoring and continuing to drive that focus on excellence and driving things forward.
Thank you, Tom. Lara?
Yeah, thank you. Like Dana, one of the reasons that my husband and I chose to move to the Reading community is that we had heard really great things about the school system. And the primary driver for me of deciding to run for school committee was that we have in fact had fantastic experiences so far, both at Joshua Eaton and at Parker. We have not yet reached the high school, but we'll be there in a couple of years. And what made me decide to run is that I have seen some trends nationwide that have concerned me in terms of a decreasing investment in public education in the United States. And I want to make sure that the Reading schools that we have had such a great experience with so far continue to be able to serve students and perform to levels of academic excellence in the way that they are today. So I am coming at this from a background of education. I think that my experiences there are worthwhile in terms of knowing where many of the students that are coming through the Reading Public Schools will be heading in post-secondary education and again, having some insight into what makes them successful. But really, I am not coming in with any strong agenda to want to change the public school systems here. I'm more about really wanting to protect the things that keep them great and make sure that the students have access to a plethora of resources that will let them learn not only based on the curricula that we have chosen, but also in interdisciplinary kinds of ways. And so I'm really interested in fostering creative opportunities for students to learn in the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. So then, so the next questions, we'll, we'll start with Laura, we'll go to Dana and then Tom.
Next question. What unique perspective or experience would you bring to the school committee if elected?
Well, as I say, I come in with an educational background. I also have a strong record of collaborative experience working in academia. Believe it or not, not all academics are collaborative all the time, but I have worked with a lot of people in research and publication kinds of settings. And because I have the experience in the classroom of knowing the kinds of struggles that students face and the kinds of challenges that they, that they need to overcome at times, I think that that will be a valuable perspective in terms of being able to weigh in on new curricular choices, being able to weigh in on district policies and being able to use that perspective to guide school committee decisions. So I think that that really is the thing that probably makes me stand out the most as a candidate. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
So, things that I think I can bring to the school committee. One, persistence. I'm running for a second term, second time. Compassion. Again, collaboration and being able to interact with everyone and see a different perspective, right? So in medicine, for the last 16 years, I've had to self-reflect when I'm like, when someone says, hey, you know what? I don't think you're right on that. Let me see this other perspective, right? So I have to look at it from a different perspective and say, hey, you know what? Maybe I didn't get the diagnosis right. Let me look at it from a different viewpoint. So having been doing that for the last 16 years, I think is a very beneficial thing. So you can look at things from a different viewpoint and a different lens. It might not be my lens, but it could be someone else's. And so having interacted with hundreds of healthcare providers and thousands of patients, that interaction has fostered me to be able to have compassion, resilience, and understanding across the board. That's what I think I'll be bringing to the table if elected school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
So unique perspective or experience? I guess because I'm the candidate for reelection, I have a unique perspective and experience in that regard. And just a few things from that perspective. Chuck and I had the unique experience of having to navigate COVID. And, you know, having been through a very challenging time, both from how it related to the community, but how it related to staff and working through that and making it work. It wasn't perfect, but we made it get done. I have experienced advocating for change and making change happen. You know, where necessary, not just change for change's sake, but change for the positive. And to that end, I have a tendency to go very deep into research. And, you know, in the reading case, for example, I've read case upon case upon case about how children learn to read. I have a note, a social network that is pretty broad and national when it comes to how children learn to read. And I brought that to bear and I brought it to our staff and I've made them available and aware of it and brought people to our staff to help them train where necessary as well. My professional background, which I didn't even talk about in the start, is in data. That's what I live and I breathe data and I use that often to analyze what we do here to help us improve and drive our change. What you can measure, you can manage. If you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And that is something we are continuing to focus on. It's actually one of our goals this year for the superintendent as we go forward. I have, like Dana, I'm a CPAC parent, so I have that experience as well of being, you know, both for lack of a better to say mainstream parent, but also a CPAC parent. And we want everybody to be included and we literally, as a school committee, have said, all means all. We want all of our students to be educated and that's, and be educated for their strengths. And finally, I'm just a doer, right? I think I've educated, I've mentioned that before, but I'll pick up the ball and run with it. Whether it's a model that needs to be built, whether it's a policy that needs to be drafted, whether it's a subcommittee that needs to be joined, I just get things done.
Thank you. So our next order will be Tom. Tom, Lara, and Dana.
Next question is, what do you consider to be the most pressing school-related issue facing the Reading community?
The easiest answer is to say that the building of Killam, right? And getting that done. You know, I think we on the committee collectively all believe and know it needs to get done. I think many in the community know it needs to get done. And so for lack of a better to say, I'll end it there because that's the easy answer, but let's go through some other things that are important. We need to continue working through the social navigation of the integration of our district. It's not hugely pressing, but it is something that's important. And we've done a great job, I believe, in the district over the last couple of years of really scaling the MECO program. As an example, we've also opened up for school choice so students can come in from other districts, which is also a financial windfall for the district. But we need to continue to foster that, you know, so that it's normalized and not an exception, right? And that kind of inclusive environment is something we still need to do a little bit more of across the district. We've done good, good work there with some of our SACS, our Student Advisory Council, or Student Advisory, I'm missing their names, but Adjustment Counselors, sorry. And the work that we've done there partially funded by the MECO program because of our expansion. But we need to continue to do work there. The other major thing I think we need to continue to do is just monitor progress. We should not ever rest on our laurels. That's one of the reasons why we have what we call a focus on excellence every time we meet is because excellence should be the goal, right? And wherever we look at something and we have not yet achieved excellence and, you know, Dr. Milicewski, myself, some of those school committee members have talked about, top 10% in the state is where we think excellence is. And now you can measure that in different ways, but top 10% is what we're going for. Until we've achieved that, we haven't achieved our end goal. And so we need to keep tuning and tuning and getting better and supporting our students and staff more appropriately.
Thank you, Tom. Laura?
I will echo Tom's support of the Killam project. I think that space is definitely at a premium in our schools. A lot of the schools that we have right now do not meet the recommended square footage per student guidance that is present from the state. But, so I think that supporting the Killam project is definitely very important. Another area that I think probably is underappreciated is I would like to see an increase in a focus on digital literacy in the school systems. So I think that it's important for that to start very young, given the prevalence of digital news and social media today. And I would like to see that more of our students get regularly exposed to learning how to process the kinds of information that they may be coming across and learning how to incorporate that into their education in appropriate ways. I was looking at the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website the other day and discovered that only 15% of students in our district have actually completed a digital literacy course at any time during their educational career here. And that seems really slow to me. The average for Massachusetts as a whole was about 30%. And so I'd really like to see that we make sure to be investing in not only, again, the standard curricula and the kinds of extracurricular activities that make students well-rounded, but also focusing on some of the newer issues that the policies that we have in place right now aren't necessarily equipped to address. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question, Chuck?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What do you consider to be the most pressing school-related issue facing the Reading community?
So I do have to agree with everyone else with Killam as one of the number one pressing issues of the Reading community. Voting yes on Killam is a must. Just to go into it, I went to Killam and then went to Coolidge afterwards. I've walked through the halls of Killam recently to see where it's at now. I don't see that anything has changed in over 25 years. So there hasn't been a lot of upgrades. So a yes on Killam is an absolute mandate. I gotta put that out there and say, you know, the flooding that comes into the bathroom on rainstorms, the foundation, the crickets, the lead in the pipes. If you can get anything out of this, please vote yes for Killam come May. After that, I think a I have like two things that I think are very interesting moving forward. I'll say one of them. So a big thing for me going through the high school was these levels that we were able to obtain in the high school. And if some people don't know, there used to be college prep, high college prep, honors and AP. I definitely was not a honors, AP student. And so I don't think I would have flourished in those type of courses. I also think strong college prep was something that I absolutely needed to be successful in college. It, to me, it's a little difficult. I know where, you know, there's no easy solution. But when I think about a bell curve, I think about, hey, where are the majority of these kids going to lie? And it's usually going to be in the middle of a strong college prep. And if you're not ready for honors or AP, then you're in a college prep course. And I just would like there to be one more option.
Thank you Dana. So the next, the order for the next question is Dana, then Lara and Tom.
Next question.
I'm sorry. I apologize. It's Dana, Tom and Lara.
Perfect. Thank you. Next question. How do you intend to collaborate with other committee members, especially when there are disagreements on certain issues?
So I think that'll kind of touch to how I've been able to collaborate with other members and other colleagues where I am at work. 20 to 30 nurses I see a day, 25 physician assistants a day, 20 doctors a day. Not, there are days that we get along and everyone sees eye to eye and you're saying, hey, I totally agree with this. This is the right diagnosis. Let's do this treatment plan. That medication should work. And there are other days where someone's like, hey, you know, maybe you should look at it from this angle. Why don't you pull up that MRI again and look at that CAT scan? Maybe you're just not seeing something that I saw. So I think knowing your strengths is something that you need to know, right? If you know that this is my strong suit and this is what I feel comfortable in and this is my wheelhouse, then that's great. Knowing that you're not always going to be right, you're going to make mistakes and you're going to know that, hey, I need to see it from another perspective sometimes is also a strong point that, and a strong perspective that I think I can bring. And knowing that you're not always right all the time is huge to be able to find a middle ground with other members that you might not agree with on the points that you guys are discussing. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
So this is an interesting question. It's something I think that is, it's a mandatory requirement. Because, you know, our school committee as it is right now is three relatively conservative, three relatively liberal members. And so collaboration to achieve a goal is mandatory for us to get anywhere. It is something we've actually done, I think, a relatively good job at over the last three, four, or five years. We've had our issues, right? We're not perfect, but we've, we've worked through it. You know, I think it comes down to really listening. Ultimately, listening to understand, right? Not listening to respond, but listening to understand. And I, I say that going back to like my high school experience in Denver, in the Denver Public Schools, where as a senior, we were brought into like a student counseling type process to be student counselors. And the first thing we were taught was your job is to listen, not to solve the problem. And I actually talked to our director of counseling, Lynn Williams, about building something like that in Reading as a way to bridge and help the counseling side of things. That's something that has been looked at. Rocket Ambassadors does that a little bit at the high school, but not completely. But listening to understand helps you to process, right? I'm not trying to rebut immediately. I'm trying to listen to But listening to understand helps you to process, right? I'm not trying to rebut immediately, I'm trying to listen to comprehend, to understand. So then I can process it and figure out how to adjust, account or work through it. Um I think there's been multiple cases where we've done that as a committee. Just recently, uh as we were in the policy subcommittee, as we're working through Policy FF, which is the, you know, facilities naming thing. There was a lot of discussion and debate about how to work through that process. Um there were other cases back when we established the reading and reading panels that were discussion and debate. We didn't always agree. Um but we came to a solution that worked for the committee and for the district to move things forward. And ultimately, that's the focus. What is it gonna help us move forward and help kids and staff? And as long as we get there, we'll be in good shape.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, so since I decided to run for school committee, I've been making a concerted effort to really reach out. And try to get to know um people who are actively involved on the current school committee in the administration. Meeting with some teachers, talking to parents. And one of the most consistent messages that I've gotten is that the current school committee does work really amicably together. And has an excellent collaborative process and that they have a strong working relationship with the administration and that the administration is very responsive. Um so I am coming into this with a very optimistic perspective about the way that the committee collaborates. Um I think that uh in in response to what Tom was just saying, I think that listening is absolutely crucial. And um I think that it's important to. Accept that sometimes you have to agree to disagree. And so I think that as long as. The processes are followed and everyone is able to share their opinion and have their opinion listened to and respected. That the group consensus is ultimately what matters. And so I would be advocating for my own beliefs. Based on the kinds of data that you talked about before, Tom, and very evidence based as a scientist. Um and so I think that it's important to listen to everybody's argument, but based on what I have heard, I think that the. Current school committee works together well, and I think that I would be able to collaborate with all of the current members myself.
Thank you. Dana?
Dana started.
I had Lara Lara Dana and Tom. Lara just went.
Well, you're the Dana started.
I started.
I went.
Tom went and then.
We're good?
No, I'm sorry, I'm on to the next. I already. Lara, Tom and Dana.
So my second or my third?
Second. You're third.
I'm third this time.
Are we ready to roll? All right, right, next question.
Took a minute of your.
We're so enjoying these conversations, keep it and keep track of what's doing what, so. All right, we're gonna jump in. All right, next question. What is your vision for our schools and what actions would you take to help us reach that vision?
All right, I think I'm starting.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um my vision for our schools is that we are a community that other communities look up to. I think that uh one of the people I was talking to recently in our community referred to our school system as a hidden gem. And I think that that's great, but I would like to reach the point where we're a gem that's not hidden and where we are really a. School system that shines and that other communities aspire to be more like. In terms of the way that that can be accomplished, I think that it's really all about investing heavily in. Teachers and investing heavily in students. The teachers are the front lines in terms of our education. And so the more resources and uh opportunities that we make available to the teachers. The better we equip them to be able to pass those resources and knowledge on to our students. And crucially, to be able to generate enthusiasm for learning in their classrooms. I think that the most successful students are the ones who want to be there and to enjoy being in school. Because they are learning things that are meaningful to them and that that they find fun. And so I think that it's all about investing in the teachers, it's all about allowing the teachers to invest in the students in creative ways. And um in terms of the broader community, making sure that the priorities of parents, for example. Are taken into consideration by the administration so that everybody feels like their needs are being direct. Are being addressed and none of their children are being left behind.
Thank you. Dana, now I got you.
Okay, so um my vision for our school system. I I gotta agree with Tom. I think a vision of this school system is getting into the top ten. Um and to have that whether. But it's not just for school systems. I I really think the vision of the school system should be a community based thing, right? Like. Growing up here was awesome sports, awesome school. No one went to private school because everyone came to this town. Because they had such a self like, hey, I'm a part of Reading, like I wanna go to school here. I wanna play for the football team. I don't wanna go to a private school. Um I think we're heading there. There are still kids that are opting to go to private schools. I'd like to keep more kids in this school system that have decided to think that their education is better to go to other schools. But I think it's on that track of getting back to this pride of living in this town and going to the public schools. Ways that we can get there. Um I'm not sure it's easy. I don't think it's gonna be in. It's gonna happen overnight, um but just like over the last five years, the school committee did an amazing job of transitioning to. Full day kindergarten. I'd like to see if it's possible to maybe transition to maybe full day Fridays for the elementary school now. It's an option. I know that there has already been budgets put in place and with the teachers and the staff. But that's something that can help enrich them whether they're getting more time at recess. So now they come back to their schoolwork and they're more relaxed. I have two boys that are off the wall, so having more time. Outside would be great, or you're getting a little bit extra um art or music, but I think that's one way. And the other ways like I was saying was the the levels in the high school. I think that would be awesome to have four levels instead of three. Um helping the kids move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
So my vision, you've sort of been seeing it for the last six years. Um but we're not there yet, um which is why I'm running again, um cause we still have progress to make and I think we're. We may never fully be there, cause it's a can op- a process of continuous improvement. I do think we can get top ten percent, but we'll see. Um so my vision is excellence and opportunity. What does that opportunity mean? It means that every child. Has a chance to meet their full potential, whether that be academically, whether that be athletically. Whether that be in other extracurricular activities, whatever it is that makes their heart go. Right? And supporting their growth in those other areas from a social perspective, emotional perspective as well. Um excellence excellence and execution. Um and that could be as simple as teacher execution in terms of the the classroom um style of teaching and the way that gets conveyed to it to a student. It could be excellence in administration. It could be excellence in the way in which we interface with with Desi or the outside world. Um as an example, and to to the point of bringing that hidden gem out, right? Um excellence in our CPAC has been phenomenal and we brought forward from CPAC things like the Right to Read film. We had a collaborative session with an open panel with members of experts from around the state come and do a presentation for our district. Um you know, back in October, November of of last year, I was fortunate enough to chair that panel and and have that conversation. Um you know, excellence in collaborative nature about how we work around the district too. Um and that doesn't stop and start with the school committee. That is the relationship between the administration and the staff. And we've demonstrated that through our union negotiations as an example. We're one of the only districts around that negotiated everything ahead of the the existing contracts and we did not face any sort of strikes. Um so that sort of stuff is every little bit where we can be excellent, we should be striving to be excellent. Um and supporting our students and staff in that process.
Thank you. So the next order is Tom, Lara and Dana.
All right, thank you Chuck. Next question. We have two capital projects in process for our town. The new Killam School Project and the Reading Center Center for Active Living Project. As you know, if one or both of these projects are approved at town meeting. There will be a special election in May to secure funding. What would your message be to residents who are concerned about the potential tax increase necessary to bring these projects to life?
Um well, first things first is. Uh I think we've already all three of us said that Killam absolutely has to get done um in some way, shape or form. Uh the current facility needs to get done. Um I I believe the Killam School Building Committee has done a phenomenal job of taking account everything that is necessary for that district, for that school. Um and including a lot of things that will help us in the long run from a cost perspective. So while we know the cost estimate of about a hundred and thirty million, as of right now, MSBA is expecting to give us back about forty two million. If we do not pass this this measure in May for Killam, we will lose that forty two million. And we will have to bear the whole hundred and thirty million as a cost. So that's one thing everybody needs to understand. Um from a tack, from a tax based perspective, that's important. Another key here is that we just recently rolled off the high school tax related expense from early two thousands. And the library related expense from the mid two twenty teens. So both of those rolling off does provide some, for lack of say, breathing room um for many households as as it looks at. This may be a little bit controversial, but I'm gonna say it, for me, Killam is the most important, right? Uh it has to get done from that perspective. I I do struggle to support both projects, uh and that is what it is. Um but that is where my head is right now. Um as I look at Killam and I look at what's necessary, I think of all the opportunities it's gonna avail for the rest of the district as well. We have big plans for the space at the high school in terms of opening up more from our pathways perspective that can be available once our rise preschool is out of the high school. So Killam is not even just about Killam, it's about the entire district. And people really need to understand that the vision of the greater district and going back to that last question of excellence and how we're trying to drive the district forward, that's part of it as well.
Thank you. Lara?
Yeah, so um I support both projects. Um I think it's been stated several times already that the state of Killam from a functional perspective. It's really in rather bad disrepair um in terms of the students not being able to drink the water and the flooding and the crickets. There's a long list of challenges, um and if you're not in a. Physical environment that supports learning, it's really hard to get any learning done. So I absolutely support uh the Killam Project. And I think it is really important to recognize the um finite availability. Or the time limited availability of the MSBA funds. I think it's also worth recognizing that the forty two million dollars. That the MSBA would be funneling into that project is more than the projected cost of the recalc center as well, which is a. A cost of thirty million dollars. And so if we do pass both projects on the. We can almost think of it as getting a two for one deal because of that MSBA funding. Um but I think that more importantly. Rather than looking at them as competing priorities, I think we can think of them as complementary priorities. So the population of seniors in town is growing in terms of its percentage. And the recalc facility would be a crucial um facility for them to be able to have access to. But it would also give us additional space as well to use for other community projects, including potentially things that relate to. The school and being able to apply that space in more creative ways, I think would be really beneficial. Um so I I would not, I would encourage people not to think about an either or kind of proposition. I know that the financial burden might be heavy for both, but I think that they are both really important to. Uh the future of Reading as a community, when we think of the whole community.
Thank you. Dana?
Um so as it comes to Killam, um. As you've, as you heard me say before, I am a hundred percent behind this, having gone to that school, seeing it now. It is in dire need of being changed. Now, when we talk about the finances, I understand we have these two big projects coming up. When you're looking at the finances and that grant money. That money does go away. Now, let's just say hypothetically, it gets voted on and it's a no. Then we bring it back and it's voted on a no. Now, what what do we do, right? So then everyone's going to say, well, how do we pay to just bring it up to code and renovate it, right? So I'm pretty sure that number is right around sixty two million. So something has to be done regardless. So now you're gonna go from sixty two million, which is just gonna give you the bare minimum. To a eighty, low eighty million, which is gonna give you a brand new facility. And I don't want people to think of it as a facility just for Killam kids, like as Tom was saying. You are getting all the rise kids there, right? So now you've opened up space at the high school for these innovative pathways, right? Now, a lot of, we've had a lot of sporting events. I know some people are into sports, right? So you're looking at the sporting events with basketball teams. Everyone's like, where are we gonna get court time? We don't have enough court time. That court is gonna have two hundred seats, right? So now you're gonna have girls, boys playing all their sporting events there too. It will be a dramatic improvement for the school system to help. When it comes to the senior center, I think it is a great idea and I think it would be great to pass both. I understand financially people don't wanna pass both. And so if you're saying you have to pick one and you don't have to pick one. Killam is something that you're investing in these kids and you're investing in the community. So it is gonna be best for everybody moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Being mindful of the time, uh we're gonna uh go to to the closing statements now. And we'll s- we'll start with Dana, then Lara, then Tom. Dana?
Um so I just wanna thank everyone again for hosting this event. Um thank you for everyone to come out. Uh I just wanna thank all the support I've had over these last few weeks. I couldn't do it with everybody and there's too many names to even count. Um this is my second time running. I have strong ties to this community. I have vested interest for years down the road with my twins in third grade, my daughter going to Parker. Along the course, if elected school committee member, I'm going to make mistakes. It's inevitable. I think a great quality is gonna say, hey, you know what? I made a mistake and own up to it. You're always gonna get what you, what I say is what I mean. There's no ulterior motive, there's no hidden agenda. If you ever have a question, you need to approach me, I'm going to give you a straight answer. You're gonna get someone who is passionate about what they do, resilient and able to collaborate with others on this thing. I strongly urge you and I ask for your vote moving forward in April. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lara?
Yeah, uh I too would like to thank all of the organizers of this evening's forum and Tom and Dana for um the conversation. As I said earlier, the reason I decided to run for school committee is because as both a parent and a Reading resident. I also have a very strong vested interest in the success of our schools and in the success of all of the students who go to those schools. So the current school committee, I believe, has a very strong working relationship with the district administration. And an excellent track record of collaborating to achieve goals like tuition free kindergarten. Um I was looking at the community report that many of you likely got in the mail recently and there were some excellent accomplishments in there as well. In terms of artistic accomplishments, athletic accomplishments of students. I was excited to see that district wide composting is going to be available soon as an, as a very ecologically minded person, that was good news to me. Um but in particular, I think my background as an educator um will really help me bring a valuable perspective to the table. And my background as a scientist means that all of the decisions that I make. About district priorities and policies will always be based on evidence, not on intuition. Um you can always believe that my primary concern will be doing what's best for the students and what's best for the teachers. And so I would ask that you please consider casting a vote for Lara Dergovich for school committee on or before April eighth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
So I'll extend my thanks to everybody as well. Um I've actually enjoyed this, whether it's official unofficial, this forum. So I come back and we talked about a little bit with the what is my why, right? My why is quite simply. Doing the right things for kids, right? It comes back to that. Um expecting the right things, um holding people accountable to do the right things. Uh leading and guiding for the right thing to be done, uh and being that consultative partner um with the superintendent and his staff. As they ask some of the challenging questions, what about this, what about that? I come back to, you know, what have we been able to do over the last six years? And I think we've made some really. And I think we've made some really big strides, as I've mentioned. Um, both from an inward perspective within the committee and within the administration, but also from an outward perspective in terms of. The perception and the way in which the district is re, is viewed, both within Reading and outside of Reading, um, and I wanna continue to grow that. Um, as I said before, we're not done, we're not there yet, um, and so my why right now is to continue to drive that improvement, right? Um, my expectations are high, and Dr. Milchewski knows my expectations are high, and I will, I will do that. But I also hold myself accountable for those high expectations, um, and I've demonstrated that through delivery time and time again. Um, you know, the union negotiations I mentioned before, I built the models that made that happen. Um, using our budget, using all the, the information we had about the staff, using what they were asking for. And helped to train and educate the union members about the expense of what they're, what they were asking for. And that made those collaboration, po, that collaboration possible. Dr. Milchewski's relationships was a huge portion of that too. I've talked in the past about investing to save, and we've demonstrated that our investment in special education has helped lead to savings in special education, so we can. Um, help more of our students stay in district and learn here. And finally, I've advocated for every different type of student we have. Um, recently or last year, I went to the Medco advocacy for funding as well, and the work we've done there. So, thank you to everybody. Uh, hopefully you'll vote for Tom Wise, um, in this coming, this coming round. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, we, we would like to thank all the candidates for participating today and, and putting your hat in the ring. That's, that's a good, good, really commendable to do that, uh, and please remember to vote. Uh, we can vote early on elect, uh, on Saturday, uh, March twenty-ninth at Town Hall. And on Election Day, uh, April eighth from seven AM to eight PM at Reading Memorial High School. And thanks again, uh, appreciate your participation.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you guys.